Waiting.
Hi, good morning, Steve. Good morning, Genevieve.
Good morning.
Good morning. Not sure why my camera wasn't on, but now it's on. Here we go.
So Kristin will be helping to run the meeting and we are recording. So she informs me that we are waiting for, it looks like Lois is with us and that we're still waiting on Liz and we have anybody waiting?
I just let Liz in.
And Liz, you're muted. There we go.
Good morning.
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 Can you hear me now? Thank you. Steve, can you hear me now? Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lois, can you hear us?
I'm here. Yes, I can hear you.
Good morning, Linda. You're muted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Dr. Molno?
There we go. Good morning.
Morning. Can everybody hear me? Linda, can you hear?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Good morning, Lois. Can you hear us? Lois, you're on mute.
I'm on.
Very good.
Linda, can you? Lois, you're still on the mute?
There.
Can you hear us, Lois?
I'm okay.
Not, we can't hear you.
I can hear.
I can hear.
Linda, we can't hear you.
Yeah, okay.
Is it just me?
Yes.
It's you, Liz.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you the whole time. We can hear everybody else, too. It's just you're having a little trouble hearing us.
Now I'm there. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Get my.
Like a bad Sprint commercial. Can you hear me now?
Sorry. Let's call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call. Genevieve Chen.
Present.
Steve DoMeyer.
Here.
Lois Derry.
Present.
Linda Molno.
Present.
And Chairman Liz Hollingsworth is here. Our agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting and we welcome public comment. Kristin, do we have any public comment at this time?
No.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Staff recommends that we approve the minutes from September 27th. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I second.
Seconded by Lois. All those in favor say.
Can I make one comment, though? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I seconded by Lois and let's open for discussion. Steve and Genevieve then.
Go ahead, Genevieve.
No, you go ahead. I didn't have any comments.
I was just gonna say, the one line, Trustee DoMeyer talked about his vast experience in marketing. Boy, I hope it didn't come across that way that I was touting my vast experience in marketing because when I read it, I went, what a jerk that guy is.
Would you like us to strike vast?
If that's what was said, if I was bragging, all right, it was I was showing my awards or something. Okay, fine. All right.
I don't think you came off like that whatsoever and I think vast was a pretty good descriptor. Genevieve, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
I just, I just wanted to make one comment. I mean, there's a lot in here that was never said at the meeting. I mean, not that it, any of it isn't true, but there were, was considerable embellishment. I mean, all the details of my, my past history and I know I didn't talk about, but I, I just want, wanted to make sure that, I know I was probably one of those that spoke most about having more detailed minutes, but if we could just stick to what was actually said, might, might help keep it a little.
Keep it shorter.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't have vast experience in marketing? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm sure you do, Steve. And, you know, just, just the same as I, I know I wasn't talking about where I got my PhD and all of that last month, but nevertheless, it, it, it's obviously just taken off my bio.
Kristin, where the, I have a question. Kristin, were those verbatim minutes from the recording?
I summarized what each person said. If you want to, you can go back and listen to the audio. I just listened to the audio and I typed up exactly what everyone said summarized.
So I don't, so you did not go and lift?
No, I didn't go research anyone.
Verbatim and summarized.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions about the minutes?
Liz, when you do the vote to approve these minutes, we actually need to do a roll call. And that's per, or that was from Amanda, who's no longer here, but we still need to make sure that we do a roll call instead of just everyone saying I at the same time. It's just easier to keep track of everyone's votes.
I thank you very much for pointing that out and let's do that. And I bet when you're typing up the minutes, that's also important.
Yes.
And Kristin, will you stop us to remind us of that? Anything to clarify for the minutes as we go along?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So approval of the minutes. We've had a motion, a second, and discussion. Instead of saying all those in favor, I'll do a roll call. All those in favor, or say yea or nay. Genevieve?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lois, do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to our chairperson's report. And Genevieve and Kathy and Kristin and I met to set today's agenda. And we also talked about our budget and CIP liaison work and we'll get to that in a minute. And as you can see, our agenda looks good and I will just have to give commendations. Kathy, you had a great city manager report draft even ready for us for that meeting and we'll go through that report today. Thank you for that.
Not the city manager's report. I'm not. I don't want to be a city manager.
Services.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't take her long to get promoted.
Trustee reports. Lois, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Dr. Molno?
No.
Genevieve?
No.
Steve?
No.
Okay. Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report. Back to you, Linda.
I really have nothing new. We're at, pretty much at the same place we were last month. Just to make note that Mary Unfortunati's exhibit will be going up on November the 6th and it will be in the Crane Art Gallery until the end of the year. We hopefully by our, our next meeting will have solidified the calendar for 2022.
Has anything been decided about opening receptions for these artists?
What we've done at this point, the artists, we have not had an artist yet who really wanted to have a reception that was eager to do it. And so we're making, we've, at this point have, have just said, you know, let's, we'll, we'll do what the, what the artist wants. I do not believe that, that Mary Ann, Marian is having a reception to the best of my recollection. And with 2022, we're just kind of keeping our fingers crossed and hoping everything moves forward in a much, much more, I don't know, I hate to say the word normal anymore because we, you know, we've created this new normal that you know, we've gotten unfortunately quite used to. I would, I would anticipate, though, in 2022 that we will see artists going back and having the kinds of receptions we've had in the past because quite honestly, that's the only way they sell artwork. I, I can't think of any artist off the top of my head who sold something just because it was hanging in the hallway and somebody walked by. So it's that extra push at a reception where they invite their friends and family and, you know, people come in and whether they feel obligated or for whatever reason, they do make a purchase. It's helpful to the, to the artists and because we ask for a donation to the library, it's helpful to us, too. So I think it's in our best interest to encourage them when, once it is safe enough to do so and they're comfortable doing it to, to go back to having the receptions. And if the weather is good, there's always that possibility of having the reception outside on the patio.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Linda. Let's go on to marketing and publicity. Steve?
I didn't have an official meeting, but Kathy and I did have a lovely discussion. Just talking about marketing in general, we didn't have anything specific that we came up with, but it was very encouraging to see her, her deep background in marketing and publicity and enthusiasm for it and getting the message out there because I've been saying for a long time, there's a lot of terrific things the library is doing and other groups are doing. It's just not getting communicated to the community at large as well as it could have, not for any lack of trying, but just maybe a little better focused effort. So it was really great to see, hear her thoughts on, on the importance of marketing and and then on a side note, I'd had a discussion with the city manager about the fact that in her weekly newsletter, the icon for community services, just a little soccer ball and that kind of indicated more recreation than library. So this week's, this.
We were wondering how the book got on there. We were, we were wondering that exact thing and I'm like, Kristin, I noticed that I go, we need to get a, a library icon. So thank you for doing that.
My cella jumped on it really quickly. She said, I don't know who does the newsletter, but they said, we'll add something on there right away. So kind of part of a sort of rebranding effort that's going on to, to, to sort of distinguish the three areas, the community services department and then the two divisions, recreation and library. So it'll, it'll be made clear as, as time goes by and, and, and things are designed. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
And, and maybe I could ask to put the, the library logo, the icon up there. I mean, that's the, that's the, the graphic brand. Right? So I could ask if we could switch that out and see how it looks and see if we can get consensus, but I think that really is, is the image we should be using.
See what I'm saying about her marketing background? This is, this is important. We speak the same language.
Already put that image in on your report there on the director's report, which is really great, too.
So it's nice working with someone who gets it. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Budget and CIP Liaison Report. Genevieve, do you want to start on that? Genevieve, you're on mute.
I didn't think I was gonna do the report. Let's see.
Well, do you want to say any comments about our meeting with Kathy and Kristin and our presentation?
I think we got a very good start on the meeting and it was very productive. Kathy and the staff are certainly well prepared for the meeting and I almost felt like I've been to the meeting already. Now I feel like way too relaxed and not prepared. I have to say, both of them are just starting and their enthusiasm is just very comforting and I was a bit concerned because all the personnel changes. But looks like Kristin and Kathy, they are getting a good start and meeting with Steve and it sounds really encouraging and I am confident.
Thank you.
And we got information from Kristin in our packet in a couple of different formats that we'll talk about a little bit later in the meeting, but thank you so much for all of that. That's great. San Marino Center renovation. Do you have any updates, Steve?
None whatsoever. We've had no meetings.
Okay. So the next spot on our agenda is the city managers.
Liz, can I?
Sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
I want to ask Steve a question and this is just, it's based on conversations that I've had with friends when we've been walking and just general things that I've heard within the community in regards to the, to the community center. There seems to be a perception that it's, that one of the main reasons for creating this space is a senior center, which every person that, that has asked me about it has said, why on earth does San Marino need a senior center when our seniors already belong to clubs and organizations and we don't have that kind of a need? And I wondered if that, if, if I just missed something in the, in the details of the presentation to the public. And I mean, you were talking about branding a little while ago, so I, I, I think if, that maybe this is something that we should address. Granted, you know, the, most of the people I was talking to either belong to Anandale or Town Club or, you know, Valley Hunt or whatever. And they have, you know, that's where they go when they need contact with other people and, and for programs. So I guess, you know, the, I, I'd like to be able to come back to them with something that would make them more comfortable about why are cities spending this much money?
Yeah, sure. I can answer that. First of all, seniors are not going to be allowed in the San Marino Center. So no one over 50 gets to go in. No, honestly, I've never heard, I've never heard the term senior center ever used in all the meetings I've been to. It's the San Marino Center. It's going to be the community center, you know, the, the compliment to the library to be where we can have recreation division programs in there, have meetings, you know, city council meetings, all that kind of stuff. In terms of, of doing things specifically for seniors, it's never come up. So.
Well, I, I think because the recreation department has always, always had programs for seniors and I think, too, that some people just conflate that term community center as senior center. And maybe it's just because we're all seniors.
That's part of it. And in a lot of communities, I don't know if you noticed this, a lot of times the older people have more influence than younger people. So a lot of times you have cities that have fantastic senior centers, but their gymnasiums and things for children aren't anywhere near there because kids aren't getting in there and attending city council meetings and voting are blocked. But I, and I'm sure Kathy wants to address this as well, but that's generally the sense. They might be equating other cities' senior centers with our San Marino Center, which is going to be a true community center serving all the needs of the people of San Marino regardless of age.
Right. Well, I think in, just in order to keep everybody happy and to kind of stave off some opposition down the road, the marketing is going to be important.
Well, Liz, you're muted. But I heard you say Kathy or I lip read it. But thank you. So one of the things that I'm going to be working with the staff on in relation to the activity guides that we are producing right now for the winter is we are adding four pages so we can be a little better storytellers with major projects and initiatives that we have going on. The number one being is the status of the San Marino Center. So Steve, I have not yet attended a task force meeting yet. I am on the committee. It's not met yet, but who would, I, I would welcome the project manager or is it whoever the lead is to write an article, we'll include a half page or even a page. It'll hit the streets in December. So I can easily, you know, if we have a rendering and then somebody write an article that really shares the vision of this facility, which then, you know, it gets mailed to every single household. And then we also make sure that our authoritative source for all public information out of the department really should be our website. So not only are we working on kind of freshening up our, our website, that the community services division website and the webpages because it's a little, we, we need to realign some things there, but we will also be using the activity guide. So Steve, who would be the best person? Should I have Marcella do that? Ken, who's the best person to maybe author that article? And then where would I get those renderings from? The architect or was there any?
Yeah, there, there are renderings. You, you can talk to Ken about that or Marcella. Ken has, when he attends these meetings, sometimes puts it up as his screenshot. So he has access to all those. You know, Michael Throne's been involved, but you may want to touch base with Marcella and see who she thinks would be the best person to put this together. I've.
Help, right? Linda, to spell any, you know, scuttle that this is going to be a, a senior center. I hadn't heard it either. So, but let's, let's just start, let's just start telling that story now, even though we are several months from breaking ground.
I think that's brilliant and I think continuing and doing some updates, whether it's through that, the community services guide or even blurbs in the local paper. I do think that, and three years ago, whether at the Blue Ribbon Committee, then the Rec Re-Envisioning Committees, a lot of talk was about more programs for seniors through recreation. And I think that happened for two reasons. One is legitimately more program offerings were needed. But also in looking at making changes to the rec department and getting the community center going, they needed the seniors input as well and we need to let seniors know that they're going to be served in the community. So that was part of where perhaps that has come from, Linda. And it doesn't mean it's a senior center, but that more emphasis on senior programs balanced against, you know, what's offered for children.
But, you know, I think where some of these folks were coming from, and I'm not sure that this is the contingent that generally opposes almost everything that's done in the city. But I, I think what, what I was hearing was a concern that if it is indeed a center that is going to be directed towards seniors or maybe even with any of these other programs, their concern was that it, it might not, how can I say this diplomatically? That we might end up in the same position down the road that the women's club was many years ago where there were many weddings from people outside the community that didn't quite fit with the San Marino model, shall I say?
Wow.
I'm trying not to, I'm trying not to step on toes. But there, there was concern quite a long time ago about the, you know, especially people coming in and whether they were serving alcohol in the women's club or not, people were consuming it either in their cars or in the parking lot and there was. And so I guess they, they wanted to make, I think they're concerned that this is going to be a center that will truly service the people of San Marino, even though people that are not community members might be able to participate as they do with the recreation program in our different sports programs and, and things like that, that it wouldn't be, that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't turn towards being majority non-San Marino people that were involved.
Well, I can, I can, I can comment that from what I understand, you know, this will be a facility and that will be part of the storytelling that this facility will serve, you know, cradle to grave and we'll have, we'll have a nice program schedule and a good balanced array of offerings for, you know, all ages and, and so I, I, we'll, we'll start telling that story.
Yeah, I know Kathy, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but there have been, there has been comments, very vocal comments in the past about the library allowing so many outsiders. It's so good to get books. And we, we always, we have the comeback of, well, we are a public library. What is it about the word public you don't understand? And I don't, but I don't know that the community center is going to have that backup. So I, I think getting out in front and, and really, you know, with, again, with the marketing, marketing is, is so important.
Lois, did you want to add anything?
No, I was agreeing.
You know, I, I think that with more rec programs occurring at the community center as opposed to Stoneman, I think that the lovely layout and the, just everything that I've seen about the center, I think the schools are going to want in on it, especially Valentine School because there are facilities that will be there that Valentine School doesn't have.
Yeah.
And Huntington, no offense, but they're not nice about sharing. And so I, I just, I, I think that it's going to be a really well-used facility just for our own programs. But I don't have a problem with rentals to anybody who keeps the center in good condition and we bring in money. Kathy, did you want to add?
Just to kind of, kind of wrap this up, maybe you mentioned the school district. I actually should have mentioned that that was at the beginning of the meeting. I have a meeting with the Dr. De La Torre and their team at nine o'clock. So I do have to leave at 8:50, but more importantly, the last time we met, her team, she had asked about the San Marino Center and she was asking about the, the programming and things like that. So those conversations have already began about some joint use for, and more of a reciprocal use of facilities and that, and as well as, you know, they're curious about the impact on parking. And I don't want to get too far down this, but, but so those conversations are happening already for future use and, and any shared space and, and a joint use agreement, maybe formalizing that a little bit more before the, the facility gets open. So, and then to that end, I do have a meeting at nine, so I have to step away at 8:50.
Thank you for letting us know. I think these are good conversations about the public perception because with marketing and publicity, there are things that we can do to try to have the correct perception out there.
Yep. We're, we're, we tell them, you know, we, we control the message. And so the, and being proactive as possible. So.
Thank you. So our next item is the city manager's update on the mission statement. And you might remember several months ago during one of our meetings, Mayor Udi suggested that we go back and look at the mission statement, which we've done. But getting into rewriting or revising a mission statement is a very huge undertaking. And I thought she was going to comment on this at our last meeting and she didn't and I forgot to call on her. So I wrote to her and asked if she'd like to come today. She was not able to come today. But I asked her, what would you like to say about the mission statement? I'd like to read her email. Hi Liz, thanks for the message. Given the number of new executive team members and how far the organization has come in four years, we will likely be tackling some revisions to our internal organizational and departmental mission statements over the next year, once we get our key personnel in place. It doesn't make sense to move forward until we've. It doesn't make sense to move forward until we've got all the new players on board, so the timeline is not clear yet. My definite preference would be in time for the fiscal year 2223 budget process. That's what I'm targeting in my head and hoping for, fingers crossed. On the other hand, I do not have plans for boards and commissions. My recollection is that it's the municipal code that lays out each body's charter. Any changes to that would require a council-approved ordinance. As it relates to the Library Board of Trustees, any changes would be, would likely be informed by the discussion we started last month about the role of the board. I'm not sure where Mayor Udi is on his homework, but that's probably the next step. You're very welcome to share this information with the board. And I wrote back to her that I would. I've had more time to read this than you have, but I think it makes sense that the staff, when new people are in place, work on the mission statements. The last time the staff did it, however, they did it in a one-day training without much, without any input from the public, and came up with what's kind of a lame mission statement, in my opinion. So it's not an item on our agenda for a vote, but I'd like some of the trustees' feedback. I'd like to table the process of the mission statement for our board with the understanding that when staff begins to plan their process to update the internal departmental mission statements, they will kindly let the trustees know how that timeline is going and how the public and the trustees will be included to share input, so that part of the process of writing the mission statement is gathering public comment. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are, and if you want me to reread any of this, I can do so. And Kristin, I will send this to you, so you have what I wrote, what I read. But Dr. Marlowe?
I guess my first thought is, or is really a question, and that's how we got to the point of staff writing our mission statement and not the Board of Trustees. Because in, to the best of my knowledge, as far back as I can remember, it was the Board of Trustees that created a five-year plan that included a mission statement that we worked, generally spent almost a year, you know, working on sections of it at a time. And when it was completed, we would submit it to City Council for their approval. Never had any feedback, negative feedback that I am, that I am aware of. And I was, I must say, I was absolutely shocked when I heard that, that staff had been, you know, taken out for a day to write a new mission statement, and we knew nothing about it. I guess it, in my, in my head, it was, it's just one more, one more instance of the city trying to take away responsibilities that we've had for a very long time. Whether they're, whether they are responsibilities that, that were in the ed code or just, just something that the Board of Trustees has, has done. I think we're here for more than just, you know, to have our, have our faces show up once a month on a, on a Zoom meeting that, you know, we're, we're here because we're all capable of, of doing things for the city and, yeah, let us, let us do it, you know. Let us take some of the workload away from, from staff. It, to me, it doesn't make sense. And yeah, I agree with tabling it until we can have everything together and, and maybe have a, a small committee working on it and giving our suggestions. I think that if the, if staff wants to write this mission statement, if that's going to be, if that, if that's going to be set in stone, I think at least we should have the opportunity to write a mission statement to submit to them for their, for them to look at as a potential statement to use.
Genevieve?
I couldn't agree more with Linda's thought. My first thought was, a mission statement to me for organization, that itself is not defined by who is going to be on staff. It's more of for the organization what our vision is, and everyone joins the organization are supposed to work towards that goal. That's my thought. So I think it'll be great for public comments. What's the expectation from the community? And what is the trustee also envision what our organization should be or would like to be or continue to be tradition or like, you know. But staff, would it be, I don't know the laws, who is supposed to write the mission statement? But I think having input and having vision might be a good inclusive way to involve everyone to work better, more cohesively, just my thought.
Thank you. Steve, do you have anything to add?
Not really, but I just will comment on, on what Genevieve was saying. I think the whole process of creating a mission statement does kind of, you know, provide input from people and get them bought into the process. So not, you don't want to write this thing by committee, because everyone says, well, we should add that word and do this. But still, just getting, gathering feedback from the committee is a wise thing to do.
Okay. I took the liberty of going ahead and replying to Marcella Marlowe, and here's what I wrote. Thank you for your prompt response. Sorry, thank you for your prompt and informative reply, Marcella. I will share with the Cole Public Library Trustees at our upcoming meeting on October 25th. As you plan the process of updating the internal departmental mission statements, please let us know how trustees and the public will be included to share input in the process. So we've got that covered, and Kathy is a good listener, so I think we've got that covered. Any other questions? So it's not for a vote, but I believe our consensus is that we're not going to continue having the mission statement on our agenda until Kathy comes back saying we're ready to work on it. Right?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm seeing nods. Thank you very much. Kathy, the director's report and staff briefing, it looks so great. And thank you for including the updates from the staff. And can you tell us about that format too, and how you invited others to contribute to your report?
Sure.
What page is it on in our packet?
Start on page 11.
Okay.
So I will trust that everybody has had a chance to at least scan through it. This is a similar format that I've used for years, as I've reported to boards and commissions. It, the, I'll be kind of high level to begin with, and kind of a structural, since it is the first time you've looked at it. So the first, you know, intro to the report will include more administrative announcements, specifically personnel, there's usually an announcement or two about personnel. And then we go on to, I go on to include anything that I believe is, again, more administrative and department head-level initiatives or projects to speak about. Then we go to page, and I trust that you've all read it, so I don't need to recap anything. So we go to page 12, and then, because I believe, I really wanted the, the board here to, to know that I am accustomed to giving budget summary reports, very executive-level, high-level budget summary reports, different than what you all have been accustomed to receiving from the, a more budget detail report, which you guys refer to as a budget monitor or the donations monitor report. So that's what I included, very high-level, quick snapshot. Then, then there's that blue bar, middle page, where it says operational reports or staff briefings. Okay, so in the future, this will be the layout, but I also included a mark your calendar section. This is to inform our, our board and you to please come and get involved in, you know, activities and events that we have going on. Yes, we did include one from recreation, but to keep you informed about all of the good programming that we have going on here at the library, as well as recreation, if it is more community-based. So you'll see a 90-day snapshot, mark your calendar. We also have city office closures, as well as the library being open. That's going to be a little bit different, even though the city offices are closed, the library may be open. So that's a good, a good schedule and a quick reference for you. Any questions about that calendar at all? Anybody? Pretty straightforward.
Do we have library staff involved in planning and going on these senior trips? Or is that a recreation?
You know, I, that is probably the, that is probably the rec staff.
Thank you.
Yeah. Then we go on to page 13, and what Liz was referring to was, these are the staff briefings, and this should be a collaborative process, all full-time folks that are programmers, which is our library team. They are very skilled at providing programs and services to, you know, our, our customers and our residents and non-residents. So they are the best people to tell and describe that, really the evaluation and assessment piece. The programs that'll be included here already happened. They are not, this is not a looking forward. This is a final piece of, we offered these programs in the last month since the last meeting, and here is, here was the outcome, and here was our impact to the community. How many people we serve, how well it went, and all those wonderful highlights. So Jeff and Tara and Rebecca, all of our library team in the future, as well as the new city librarian, they will have, have a role in contributing to this section of the report. Then, so does it maybe be questions about any of the programs that, that were listed?
I have just a small question, maybe for Jeff. The take and make kits seem so popular, and the Batman Day take and make kits, I noticed 17 people were on the waiting list. Is that because they, like, they signed up late or something? Or do we need more help in getting or making kits?
Well, it's true, these are very popular. And I, as I recall, they're worse than late. Latecom, I shouldn't say. But she does try to make a sufficient number of kids. I don't know what else to say on it, really.
Well, I think, you know, Linda was saying a little early in our meeting that we can help, and I'd be willing to help with either materials or putting together enough kits. I understand that if they come at the last minute, there are not going to be enough kits for those late signer-uppers. But that's something that, you know, I'd love to see that everybody who signed up by the deadline got kits.
Yeah, I will pass that on to Tara for it.
Thank you.
Okay, so on page 14 is where it begins. We finished the staff briefing portion, but then I have a new subheading that I'm going to include. It's called Public Works Project Support and Facility Maintenance Updates. So as you're aware, in the operating budget for this year was the $30,000 set aside for the interior painting, and so I described what Michael explains to be the status of that. Hopefully, as soon as the new person starts, we're going to get in the queue and make sure that this project does get done before the end of this fiscal year. That will be his new Public Works Manager will be working with their team or any, any contractors to get that done. And then the story walk at Lacy Park is actually in Public Works side of the house as well, and I gave an update on that. And then just moving on, because I, I'm so sorry, I just have to manage my time here. I have about six minutes. I did include a section called Marketing Communications, Social Media and Publicity. This is just a baseline information. In the future, it'll be a little more robust and descriptive, but the sections of this area that we will report up to you all will be the Activity Guide, which is our print piece that is four times a year, currently in production. I spoke about it a little bit. You'll, you'll see some, some new formatting and making sure that the library, I have heard and read a lot of the comments about the, the concern about the library's brand and the library getting sort of gobbled up by this, the big beast called, I'm teasing a little bit, the beast called the Community Services Department, and that it's sort of, but I, with all due respect, that we absolutely do, do need to make sure that the, the library has a, a front and center, you know, identity within that Activity Guide. So trust me that that will happen. The website I mentioned earlier, we'll, we'll, we'll share some, some updates as we move to make that more efficient and a better user experience and consolidate a lot of the pages. We have way too many pages. A lot of things, links are broken, so we'll provide an update there. The next sections are the social media. Again, this is just baseline numbers. We will, in the future, talk about how we grow our followership, not just a raw number. We'll say we will have hopefully increased our, our views and our shares, as well as our followers on both Facebook and Instagram. And then I'll share any press releases. There wasn't any during this reporting period. I will also share, along with, with staff's input, if the library is in the news, if we ever appear in the newspaper, we'll give a link if we ever appear. You know, I had mentioned to Genevieve, and, and those guys are from the major media. We get a video or a free in LA Times or some leisure and, and, you know, interest, special interest section, we'll be certainly inclined to share that with you. And then the final section here is when we receive, and staff receives high fives, attaboys, kudos, we want to absolutely share that up with the board and up with City Council. So I have informed the staff that every time they get those written notes, they get those emails to please forward them on, and they'll be included here. So that kind of encompasses sort of the outline of my report. And the other thing I want to double back on that I glazed over and I apologize is the actual very first thing, the personnel update. The recruitment brochure for the city librarian position was also included. If you guys have any questions for me about the recruitment brochure or anything else included in my report, I'd be happy to take questions. I have about three or four minutes. Sorry to be on a timeline. Steve?
I just wanted to say what a terrific layout this is and how helpful it was. And so thanks so much for that. I found it a very useful document. And then what I especially loved was the last thing you talked about, the comments from the staff. I would love to see that incorporated somehow in marketing materials, because that's a real human being, talking about real things. It was fantastic.
Yeah, I, you and I, you know, we are cut from the same cloth. So those testimonials, those will be laced in. It takes a lot of work to make sure that we highlight those, whether it be on the website or in the Activity Guide, or even in a report here. That is a public document. I will absolutely, you know, help staff to understand this is part of our story. It's part of what we do. We make a very positive impact on the community that we serve, and we need to share those, those stories and those personal testimonies.
To you civilians, that's called word-of-mouth advertising, so, you know.
Genevieve?
I like it, and I'm looking forward to see how we grow followers on social media, because really that is how you get people to know your organization nowadays.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, we're going to, we got to work on getting a, some skilled staff members that, that are social media experts. So that's a gap in the skill set that we currently have, but I'm working on it.
Kathy, I know you're going to be leaving us any moment, and I think we can get along with our next. Kathy, I know you're going to be leaving us any moment and I think we can get along with our next two items, but number 11 on our agenda, consideration of resuming in-person trustee meetings. Do you have any comment on that?
I do. Thank you. I spoke with Marcella and so she has informed me that the city has about four, four active boards and commissions right now and, and no one is meeting in person and the green light, so to speak, to meet in person will actually come from council. So they have not given any boards and commissions the green light to meet in person or to even go to a hybrid model except for council. And that's more statute, you know.
We should expect for our November meeting, we continue to zoom. We're dark in December and then we'll see what happens by the end of January.
Yeah, I, and, and as Marcel and I talked through really what, what this will really look like probably going forward. The, to be able to go to a hybrid model, if we went from virtual to hybrid to then in person, there, there will be a, a huge staff impact and I'm not talking financial, I'm talking just being able to logistically administer a hybrid tele, telecommunications model and meet the, the parameters of the Browns Act. That it's going to take three, three staff to do that and that, that requires trained folk. You know, trained staff to be able to do that. Right now, we have Kristen, who's our rock star in terms of technology. It would require an AV person as well as a camera person. So there's just a lot more logistics and technology moving parts to go to a hybrid. So I don't know that that's going to be our future. It may be that we, if we can't get, you know, that, that more of a phased approach. We may go from virtual to an in-person over the next, you know, it's just so we can manage our expectations a little bit.
Thank you. And I think we're, we're happy to get back to in-person, but we will wait for the call. We'll wait for you to tell us.
Right.
Linda?
Just, just one quick comment, Kathy. And again, I, I've been on this board for a long time and my, my end is nearing, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm really having trouble coming up with more than one or two people who have ever attended our meetings that weren't part of, part of the trustees or city staff. So to have a hybrid makes no sense for us. So we would, I think.
If, if you guys wanted us to do it, you know, we certainly would, but you know, I, 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 I'm not advocating one way or the other. It's really, you know, we serve at, at, you know, at your discretion and how you want to present yourselves and accessibility to the public and so.
I think we would like to get back to our in-person meeting, even if we have to meet in a larger room like the bathroom to have proper distance between us. But we're also, I think, willing to wait for the go-ahead from the city manager.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. And then I trust that, I'm going to sign off here. And I trust that you guys will go easy on Kristen. I have to give her the utmost of appreciation and an atta boy for all of her hard work in preparing the, as a, as a new management analyst. Preparing the reports to, to the historical expectation. So great job, Kristen. I know she's going to do great answering any little questions that you might have or big questions that you might have. And it's great seeing everybody and I'm going to sign off and Jeff is here and he's gonna, he can handle any of the big hot topics too. So have a great week, everybody.
Thank you.
You?
The budget monitor detail reports. Kristen, do you want to go ahead and begin? I, I just want to start with, that I really appreciate your notes and your annotation comments. That's very, very helpful.
Okay, well, I'm glad. Good morning, everyone. So when I started, I inherited all of Robert's documents. And I noted that in his report for the July meeting, he presented the preliminary year-end financials. And so I went ahead and updated his spreadsheet and presented you guys with the finalized year-end data. There weren't too many big changes. I highlighted the big ones in the discussion of the report. I guess the main, one of the biggest ones was the increase in equipment for the restricted donations line item. And that was just from the 36 public access computers. But like I said, not a lot changed. And then I also prepared this year's fiscal, this fiscal year's data for quarter one. But it is important to mention that September's books have not been closed, so that data is still preliminary. Finance Department hasn't even presented quarter one to council yet. So again, I mean, all July, August and September, those data numbers, they might change. But for the most part, everything should be in there. There was an error on finances and in regards to the DVD rental revenue line item. So that was in. They improperly recorded rentals in July and then they fixed it in September. And that's probably one of the biggest things that I want to point out to you guys.
Line 38, Kristen?
No, that is line six.
The revenues.
Yes. Line six. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Is that? And Jeff, you may remember we had money budgeted for DVDs in the last year, but then because we weren't getting a lot of them, we reallocated the money towards some of the programs during COVID.
That's the way I remember it.
You do?
Yeah, I, I don't recall that.
Okay, but besides that, we did receive three donations in quarter one so far. And I don't believe this accounts for the two donations that Liz brought up in our last meeting from the friends. Third, sorry, the foundation. So those probably have not been accounted for on finance's side. Like I said, their books are not closed. But we did, we do have three of them totaling to $600. I believe they were all in July. Yes.
And then these other donations that the foundation has made 2,000 or 2,500 from the trivia night and so forth, are they shown in this budget mon, the donations monitor yet?
No, finance has not inputted the donations on their side, but we have passed on those checks to finance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The donation amounts were 27, 25 and $1,000.
From the?
Foundation.
From the foundation.
Yeah, I have one last question and I didn't, because I didn't see it when we met before, Kristen, but on the bottom of the budget monitors like lines, I don't know, in the 60s at the bottom, the last section is financial impact. And that hasn't been on our reports before. So could you speak to the addition of that section?
I actually thought that was on the reports historically because I just used Robert's template. I did not change anything. Does anyone else recall if it was on there?
I think the line that gets me is the percent cost recovery. And cost recovery has never been part of our budget discussion because we're not a cost recovery department as recreation is. And so that, that concerns me and I don't know if you can speak to that now or perhaps when we, if we have another budget liaison meeting, when we, you and Genevieve and I can talk. But I'm, I'm concerned about that being on there because I don't want the, again, it's, it's an appearance, it's a perception. And I believe that I have heard Dr. Marlowe say that the library is not a cost recovery department, that there's not that expectation from her or the city. So if we could kind of figure that out.
Yeah.
That section could be eliminated because we don't have to determine a cost recovery number.
Yeah, I, Liz, I don't recall seeing that on the monitors in the past and it would be easy to go back because they're, they're attached to all of the agendas that are available online. I, I.
And Kristen, it certainly could be that it was something that Robert or Chris before him calculated, but didn't share that part of the spreadsheet with us.
It actually is on the spreadsheets. I, I checked May or no, June and July, and it's on both of them.
Really?
I mean, but we can, we can remove it because I actually didn't even look down that far. Because those are all just formulas.
Thank you. That would be very reassuring.
Okay. Anything else?
And again, we can talk about this further during our budget liaison. But I think this quarterly report and it's called Attachment Two, and on my packet, it's on page 21. And I think it's what Kathy was referring to as a higher level report. I refer, think it's more a summary. Are you going to continue to present both of these to us?
I think what Kathy wanted to do was to present her higher level summary budget report and also the details. You can see which one you guys like and then kind of go from there to see what the board wants us to present. I think this time we just presented both. You could see them side by side, see what you like and then maybe see if you guys want to take a vote as to which one you prefer.
I'd like to continue our budget monitor and our donation monitor. And if it's not too much to ask in terms of staff time to do this second report again, so that we have a couple of months to look at it and to see if it over time gives us enough information. I want to say to the other trustees, you'll also notice that in this packet, we didn't have that like 15-page statistical report. Remember on circulation and books purchased and so forth. Because it's a big thing for the staff time-wise to have to produce for us. It's a big thing for us to have to read, but at this point, I also told them not, that they didn't have to work on that because we'd be comparing to last year or three months ago, which to me during this COVID time is not comparable for planning or interpretive. It, it doesn't help us. So that's something that I think Kristen and Kathy are going to keep looking at and working on and thinking of how to get that information to us in a way that doesn't have a lot of staff time attached to it.
Liz, if I could just make a comment, I, I, I agree that, you know, we don't want to take up staff time when it's not, if it's not productive. But some kind of a summary, if we could have some kind of a summary that would just alert us to, you know, any real inconsistencies or red flags so that, you know, we could be available to help staff. Either with suggestions or, you know, physical help, whatever was necessary if, if there became some issues. I, I just, I'd like it not to go completely under the rug. So to speak, but, but just some kind of a summary, maybe, you know, just a one-page, half-page summary. You know, if there, if there'd been any inconsistencies.
I, I, I think we have to remember Kristen's been on board for two months.
Right.
And Kathy's been here for maybe five or six weeks. And so the priority to me at least was this budget monitor and the donations monitor for today's meeting and not those statistics. But I think.
No, I, I agree with that, but I, I would.
Think in the future, it is their intention and we did discuss, they'll come back to it. And one of the things that I suggested is that we take a meeting where we really look at that and say, this is what I follow. For instance, I like to look at how many children's books have been circulated and purchased. And maybe you like to look at the number of new Chinese language materials or the number of periodicals that were circulated so that they can really look at what it is that we're interested in and provide that information.
Well, and it may be something we don't need every month.
That's true.
Maybe a quarter, quarterly summary would be sufficient.
Okay.
Unless something extraordinary, you know.
Right. I, I just want to make sure we don't, that something doesn't get, start to happen that we don't see, that we could have gotten out ahead of.
I see your concern.
Yeah, I just, just trying to be proactive.
Okay. So we'll discuss those things as we bring it back. Any other questions or comments for Kristen on the budget and donation monitor detail reports?
No, I think you've done a great job, Kristen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen, you really hopped on what Genevieve and I were asking for very quickly. And we really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's not easy. It's with all this turnover, it's just really not easy. Thank you. Good job.
Thanks. Let's go on to our last item, which is new business number 12, Board of Trustee Membership. And the recommendation is, is I think it was back on October 13th, when the city council met, they officially proclaimed Lois continuing as a trustee in a new third-year term, her second term. Thank you, Lois. And we're so happy you're going to continue to serve. And also they approved Genevieve to continue. And now rather than an alternate, she's an official member of the trustees. And that was also approved by the council on October 13th. When we have that changeover, we also select our new chairperson and vice chairperson for the year going forward. Hallelujah. So I'd like to open up for an election for the chairperson and the vice chairperson. And I'd like to take nominations for a chairperson. I would like to nominate Steve Dolemeyer. As the chairperson, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Molno, Genevieve and Lois. Okay. Any discussion?
I, I, I just want to say you took the words right out of my mouth.
I did. I had to jump. Okay. No discussion. Let's take a roll call vote. And Lois, can you unmute? Lois, do you vote yes? Nod your head, yes or no? Lois votes yes. Linda?
Yes.
Genevieve?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes, it is unanimous. Steve Dolemeyer will be our new chairperson in about two minutes.
Wow.
Well, Liz.
And a new vice chairperson. Do I have a nomination for a vice chair?
I, I nominate Liz Hollingsworth to be vice chair.
Second.
Second, I mean, third.
Oh, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Lois, you have to nod your head or because we can't.
She's, she's.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
Genevieve?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
So I will take over as the vice chairperson in a few moments.
Kristen and Jeff, you can see we're, we're really quite in, in sync here.
We're a consensus builder group. Thank you all very much. And Steve, we just really look forward to your leadership and I think with the relationship building that you're already doing with Kathy and with Dr. Marlowe will just be superb opportunities for our library. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I just, I want to make sure I'm following the model that Liz, you and Linda have.
I just, I want to make sure I'm following the model that Liz, you and Linda have set as, as I've been part of this group for a long time. Just the, the leadership you've shown is, has been a really good example. So I hope to ascribe to some level of that.
It'll be great. Thank you all. Thank you very much for being here on this gloomy morning. And we are going to, oh, Kristin, do we have any additional public comments?
No.
Any written communications or public writings that we distributed? No.
No.
Okay, let's adjourn at 9:10 a.m. and we will meet again. Our next meeting is Monday, November 22nd at 8:00 a.m. And I believe it will be via Zoom, sounds like. And remember, that's the Monday right before Thanksgiving. So we'll just meet for an hour, right, Steve? And then we can go bake our pies.
I, I like long drawn-out meetings. So, you know, just take up as much time as possible and use up city staff resources. We'll be brisk.
Thank you all so very much.
I'd like to, I'd like, on behalf of the board, I'd just like to thank Liz for her leadership. She's just been absolutely phenomenal.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you. I love our library. I really do.
It shows.
I should feel it.
Right.
Thank you. And we'll see you all soon. Happy gloomy day. Bye.
Yes.